I'm calling the order, the Tuesday, September 12th, 2023, Air Planning Board Meeting. First item of business is to approve the agenda.
Move to approve the agenda.
Do I have a second?
Seconded.
Okay. Any discussion, modifications, requests? Hearing none, all in favor of approving the agenda.
Aye.
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 Chair votes aye, it's unanimous. The Devon Study Committee, we need somebody. I just put myself out there for the Stonewater utility, which I just summarized for you that those who are here, that went very well, but we need, in addition to Jeff, we need a second person apparently on there. Yes, go ahead, take the lead, Jeff.
May I also say, unrelated to Devon Study Committee, the Planning Board is going to be tapped for a member to sit on the Site Selection Committee for the upcoming senior center at some point in the near future. And I just, well, we can't do that tonight because it's not on the agenda, but I want to say, put that on everybody, the Select Board at their last meeting, built the committee, and it requires somebody from the Planning Board.
Okay, thank you, Jeff.
So think that through.
Can you put Nick, make it now?
Yeah.
You're making a note.
Yeah.
Would you be interested in doing that again, Kevin?
Well, we can't do that now.
Sorry, Kevin isn't interested. Ken is interested, yeah.
I would recommend, in the future, that we consider the person who was on the committee before to be on the committee going forward, which may preclude that person from doing Devon's enterprise.
Yes, good point.
Because it's a balancing act at that point.
In other words, we're looking at you, Julie, and Nathan.
Yeah.
That's what it comes down to.
Do you want to do it? Okay, so can I respond in two different ways?
Sure, you may.
Briefly, I will be as brief as I can. I just, my original answer that I would like to give, I want to give two different answers, is I'm okay with allowing, I want to be careful that we're not pressuring all of us and singling out people, I know you meant well, to fill all of these other boards that they want planning to be on. And I think if we have a lot of empty seats across all of our boards, we know we all encourage everyone in town to be involved, but we also have to be a little gentle with ourselves in how many other boards we can sit on and provide for. So I, I'm going to speak both ways, is I would like to be giving voice to, I'm okay if that seat has to sit open for a little while, because it might just need to not have two Planning Board members on it, and I think our town needs to hear that, and I know that's not you, Danny, but I hope you echo that for me within Town Hall. But I will say, and I've said this at the last meeting, I am very personally interested in this, and I would very much want to be on this. I went to the last meeting, Jeff invited me, as I know it was also open to go, so I was able to see it, I know they are touring Devon's, so the next meeting sounds very important. So I think I will attend that if they'll allow me as a guest, and I would just like some patience to feel that out for a little bit, and most likely I will be accepting and asking to be that person for this board.
Jeff, do you know if there's a time when we have to have the appointment filled?
Bear with me for a second. I believe the next Devon's, the next meeting of the Air Devon's Resolution Committee is Wednesday, the 27th. Tuesday, the 26th is the next Planning Board meeting, so if we took action on the 26th, it would be, it would be okay. That would be for the next, the tour meeting date.
That's not...
I'll do my best to get you an answer by then, but I am being very transparent.
No, I did, and I'm going to speak up, I mean, one of the things that Julie and I laugh about personally is how much we do and how many different committees we're on, and we both have lives outside of here, and I know Mr. Diskin is in the same boat, and that doesn't in any way reflect him to anybody else.
As does Nathan.
Okay, we all, we all have lots of things going on, so I appreciate that. I also, and I have, you know, when we build committees in this town, because it's hard to get volunteers, sometimes I feel like, oh yeah, one from here, one from here, it's like, pick one from column A, one from column B, one from column C, and find some citizens, lightens the task, but makes our tasks heavier.
It does.
So I'm perfectly okay if this remains open at this point, I will commit to and continue going to Devon's.
Thank you.
It's a long-term project.
It is.
And so we're still looking for Devon's residents and some other things, so I think it's perfectly honest, I love Julie's honesty about this, because just because we got to have a seat filled.
I hear you.
If it was Stonewater, I'd just say no, but I actually, I, my skill set and my interest is with this, so I'm having trouble saying no.
Yeah, and this is why I also think we, this is the discussion where having an associate member is also going to be helpful, finding someone who can...
For our board.
For our board, exactly, that's what I mean.
Yeah.
Sitting on this board, give us an additional member, someone else who, you know, we can spread out the committees a little bit more, so that not everyone's on like four or five committees, you know, it helps.
That's a good point.
And so I think this is where, I think we should eventually start really thinking about...
Who that other member is.
Potential members. I mean, exactly, I mean, just off, just off the top, planning's elected, but planning's required to have somebody on the MRPC, somebody on the Devon's Enterprise, State of Study Committee, which is now called the Devon's, the Air Devon's Resolution Committee, we're required to have somebody in the Senior Center Building, we've heard of somebody on the Stonewater.
Flora Balhouser.
CPC.
Flora Balhouser is there. I'm actually CPC.
CPC.
CPC, so there's so much carry, you know, for the general public, there's a lot of...
Yes.
...horizontal lines between committees that come from this, that come to this table. So I really do appreciate, and I, it's hard to, I mean, I love things, I can't do it, I can't find time, it's impossible to get a meeting time when everyone in the room is on other meeting, on other committees.
Absolutely. Just for clarification, please, this requirement is for two members of the Devon's?
Two members of Devon's Enterprise.
Who came up with that story?
That was from, that was from the Select Board.
Yeah.
And, yeah, and just, just, so you all know, we know it as Devon, as the Devon's Study Committee, it's actually now referred to as the Air Devon's Resolution. 498 of 93 calls what we're doing resolving, resolve.
That's the language in the...
The language is now the Air Devon's Resolution Committee.
So, to wrap this up, so we can continue the meeting, it looks like, Julie, you have some interest tentative, tentative, maybe yes?
Yes.
All right, that's the best we can do, that's for the moment, and that's fair enough.
I'd like to move that we table this until the next meeting.
You got it. Second. All in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
Aye, everyone says aye.
Thank you.
Just, please, sir. Quick question though, Danny, are you asked to be on that, represented on that minute?
Yeah, not.
So the town planner is not asked to sit, okay, just curious, so, thank you.
Excuse me, it's, economic development and community development are involved through the economic development at this point in time. I agree with you, Mr. Diskin, that it seems like be a disconnect, but in the last meeting, the conversation went the way of, instead of thinking about it as lines on a piece of paper, as you've heard me refer in the past, think about it as a neighborhood, and what does the neighborhood need to be supported? And we're going to take kind of that tack for a while, out of it will come zoning, but let's look at it as a community and a neighborhood, and how can they embrace it, how can they embrace us?
Fair enough.
So.
The next item is West Main Street, and I believe that the appropriate action, Danny, is that we motion for continuance, correct?
Correct.
So, as a chair, can I make the first motion?
Yes.
All right. So I make a motion that we continue the site plan, special permit for the Opera for Overlake District, and Stonewater Management Permit for 201, 205 West Main Street applicant DMG investments to our next scheduled meeting on September 26, 2023.
Second.
Any discussion? Yes. Please, sir. So, did you say all three categories, or did I miss one? I said site plan, special permit, Opera for Overlake District, and Stonewater Management Permit.
Thank you.
Those are the three, right?
Yes.
Okay, good. We got a second, right?
Yes.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Because the applicant is not here, we have basically a precedent that we won't discuss anything about the matter...
Correct.
...without the applicant being present.
That is correct. The only thing we would be, I don't think there's anything we could really discuss.
Okay, well, the only thing I was going to double check that we have been given any extensions and stuff based on our continuance of the meeting, has the site plan been given a continuance and things like that have been, have these things been given a...
So the applicant...
Another date, so that...
So the applicant has requested this continuance to the 26th, so by that, that extends it to the 26th, so I think you're talking about time to act.
Time to act.
Yes, so what I will do is I'll request a, an extension of that from the applicant, but by them requesting the continuance, it extends it to that date.
I understand that, but you know, you understand what I mean.
But yes, the extension of time to act.
I'm asking for an extension of the time to act.
Yes.
Based on the fact that we've been meeting quite a long time already.
Yes, yes.
So there might be, we might be running up against a 90-day requirement or something.
That's correct, and so the way it works is if the applicant requests a continuance, and say we were, say it's in two days, and they requested a continuance to the 26th, that extends it to the 26th.
It's automatic.
It's automatic by a continuance, but I will request an extension of a longer period of time. Typically, we make a request of the applicant, because...
Yeah, we get something in writing.
Yes, and this comes into the next topic also, discussing and acting in one meeting is a rarity in planning.
Yeah, right.
So, yeah.
Okay, that's all I had, thank you.
Yes.
And by the way, I made the motion with the assumption that we did have that in writing, and...
Yes, and we do.
Thank you for verifying.
Yes, and I do have that in writing from them, a continuance.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
Chair votes aye, it's unanimous. So Danny, the next item on the agenda is the Mullins Rule, could you walk us through the document you created for us and explain the process?
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair.
Yep.
Are we opening a hearing on this this evening?
Oh, yes, we are.
I'd like to move that we open a public hearing for the Mullins Rule, General Law, General Bylaw Recommendation to the October 23rd, 2023 Town Meeting, to see if the town will vote to accept for all boards, committees, or commissions holding adjudicary hearings in the town the provisions of General Law, Chapter 39, Section 23DA, subsection 23DA, which provide that a member of a board, committee, or commission holding an adjudicary hearing shall not be disqualified from voting in the matter solely due to the member's absence from one session of such hearing, provided that certain conditions are met or take any other action relative thereto.
All right, so, you got a second?
Seconded.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Okay, now we'll go. All right, thank you, Jeff.
All right, so this is the Mullins Rule, which we've been talking about several, you know, for a while now, and what this does is, the board would be making a recommendation to Town Meeting for a general bylaw adoption of the Mullins Rule, and just to explain to everybody, just, this is a general bylaw, so technically, the Planning Board does not have to have a public hearing on it, but I felt that it would be best to just get, have the public hearing, make sure if anyone wanted to come in and have questions about it, that we could discuss it before Town Meeting, and that way, there's, if there's any issues, we can get that out before then. And so, Mass General Law, Chapter 39, Section 23DA, so the, under that section, it basically states that the towns need to adopt this rule for, for the state law to be live in that town.
Applicable.
Applicable, there you go. Yes, for the community.
For this provision to be applicable.
Yes, for, exactly, for the provision for this section of the Mullins Rule to be applicable to the town. And what this does, it allows any board, committee, commission that holds adjourned hearings, which is what the Planning Board does, conservation, ZBA, Select Board, those kind of boards, it allows, if a member attends a hearing for an application, and it gets continued to the next meeting, if that member then misses the second meeting, they don't get disqualified automatically. They can review the materials, the meeting minutes, the video that's recorded, then the member will sign a, there's a sheet that goes along with it, basically stating that they have reviewed all of the pertinent information, they sign it, and that gets put into the file for the project. And that allows that member to still sit on that application and vote. If this, the way, if we were to continue the way we are now, where this is not applicable, if a member misses one meeting, they can sit and discuss, but they cannot vote on that application. And so, especially with the Planning Board, on special permits, as it's a supermajority, four out of five, if a member misses one of those meetings, they're no longer allowed to vote on that application, which then leaves the applicant with having to get four out of four. So this is more for, this helps the applicant, this also helps the town board members, so that they can also still be able to vote on those meetings.
I have two questions.
Yes.
Is that okay?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, the way you worded it...
Mm-hmm.
If I missed the initial meeting, like the first one, like when it's opened, can I still catch up on that one?
Yes, you can.
Okay, so that was just a technicality, I think I just heard.
That was a good question.
And then, secondly, if I miss the last one, which is the voting...
Get to vote. Then you don't get to vote.
Then you don't vote. Okay, those are, those are the good clarity.
The same way we operate now.
Right.
Yes.
So you're present for the actual voting, so you're present for the discussion, or whatever that may be that night?
Yes.
It's just, the technicality here is that if you miss any information, you're immediately disqualified, as you were pointing out, Jeff, some of our processes take months that we're meeting with these things.
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
And it's, you know, it's, it's understandable why this law was put in place, because as much as everyone will show up to these meetings and be on time, sometimes there's an occasion that you can't help not be able to show up, and that's where this would fall into.
Okay.
We tried to double your pay for the Planning Board, just to make it more attractive, but it's an interesting thing if you start doing searches on this, and I want to open this up to public comment, because I think it's a great idea. No one's ever successfully challenged. There's never been a successful challenge with this law.
To this provision.
Yes.
But the original challenge by Mullin.
The original, yes, the original challenge, that's how. Was successful, but as, but as far as I can tell, and I don't have access to the law library, but looking through mass law, there's never been a successful challenge to this, and for the simple reason that rarely do we open, discuss, close, and vote.
Right.
Because these are complex issues typically.
Good, so Danny, how would we phrase the vote today?
I think we first want to open up to the public.
What about the board?
And to the rest of the board, yes.
Well, I know, but I also just want to know what it is, we're actually, just to make it clear, it's a vote to recommend.
It's a vote to recommend to Town Meeting.
One more question, the language here says that the members, says here, from no more than a single session of the hearing, does that mean you can only miss one?
That is correct, yes.
One Mulligan?
That's it.
Yes.
One Mulligan, Mullin, that's right.
That's it. One's better than none.
Yes.
Yeah, I was going to have the same question.
Still pretty tight.
We could make it the Nathan King bylaw, if you'd like to make a multiple regulation.
The Mulligan, the Mulligan.
So to address, I think the underlying concern in Nathan's question is that what this means to me is that we have to be much more intentional and deliberate when we establish public hearings. We have to think and anticipate like where we all are and have that conversation before we commit to opening a public hearing, and get that, get our act together, because you're right, we, each of us can only miss one, so it is important that we're be aware of...
And I'll also, and I'll also put on the table that this will only come up if the adjudication is not to the liking of the applicant. And there's a lot of opportunity of back and forth when an applicant's at a table, and we've been fortunate over the last four or five years to have almost nothing be highly contentious. We've had exciting stuff, but not highly contentious stuff.
I think the closest we came to this was when we were potentially voting on a special permit for another project.
Correct.
And the applicant intentionally asked us if they could continue it, because it was only four at the table. They didn't mention the Mullin Rule that night, they mentioned the fact they were concerned about the supermajority, that they would, that they would have had to get all four that were that night on their team, but we never did hear about the Mullin Rule, and I want to thank Mr. Ruiz very strongly for this, because I think this should have been told to all of us before we got on any board in town, that any person serving on a board needs to be aware of this, what's going on here, because it's very important, and I was going to have the same question as Nathan, thank you for asking, so if you miss two, you're out to lunch.
Yes.
You cannot vote on anything.
Cannot vote.
Along the way. The other twist I had to it, and I don't know if you even know this, because you haven't reviewed the law, and I haven't dug in that deep, but I did, I want to clarify one thing first, that the language that Mr. Ruiz is showing us is the exact language that's given by the state.
Yes.
There is no concept here that we are developing language for the article, the article is the exact wording that's recommended by the state to pass this, this change at the general laws in town.
If I can ask one more procedural question, I understand that this, that the Select Board also shares an interest in passing this law, and I believe they will be the sponsor.
They'll have to be the sponsor.
They will be, the Planning Board is not sponsoring this as a warrant article, it'll be sponsored by the Select Board, so we're recommending to the Select Board that it go on.
Right, because they're the one that are going to make decisions for the whole town, but the process, I agree totally with Danny's process of bringing this up to us, let's go through it, we recommend it, take the next step to Select Board, and then it'll move right on to the warrant. So my twist to this question is, if an applicant, if this were to happen, which it already has, we have one situation already, so we have a real-life situation going on right now. If one of us now were to miss another meeting before this passes, okay, Town Meeting, now, typically when things go to Town Meeting, the process is it goes to Town Meeting, gets voted, and has to go to the Attorney General.
Yes.
It can take like three to six months...
Yes, it can.
...to get a letter back from the Attorney General.
That is correct.
My question is going to be twofold, is this, is there some precedent that says if a Town Meeting passes this, it doesn't need to wait for the Attorney General, since it's already statute somewhere else in the state, so it goes into effect immediately? That's my first question. That's a great question. Do you know, Danny?
Off the top of my head, no, I don't, actually.
I think there may be some possibility, so let's... So we want to know that, so that every one of us is going to want to know that. We wanted to, we would love to have it go to effect the day after Town Meeting, is what I'm getting at.
Mm-hmm.
The second part of the question is the real trick question, if we now have a situation in real time that we are short one voting member.
Yep.
If something were to happen, for instance, I had to go in the hospital for another operation, and I missed, I missed a meeting, okay, I missed two meetings, okay, you only have to miss one now, because it's not in effect.
Correct.
Okay, now this board is down to three voting. Does the, what is the implication for the special permit, which needs a supermajority? Is it automatically constructively approved, or they have to start over or something?
The way it works is they would have to withdraw without prejudice...
Okay.
...and reintroduce all the information.
So, in essence, that becomes a...
Or, I'm sorry, choose to continue because a supermajority who can vote is not...
No, no, we can't vote, because we missed two, I missed, two of us have missed.
Choose not to hold the hearing at that meeting, make a request...
Oh, I hear what he's...
Continue until the members are available.
But it won't matter.
I think he's saying...
Because I'm saying there's two of us now that are out. I missed, I miss a meeting, or one of us misses another meeting.
No, you're missing what Jeff's saying.
I understand what he's saying, as a strategy, push it to the next meeting, but what I'm saying is, I've missed a meeting, therefore I've lost my ability to vote.
Yeah.
So now you're down to three, I don't care how long you continue it.
Yeah.
You only have three to vote.
Yep.
You need four.
Yes.
That puts a burden on the applicant, which is unintended.
Which is why it surprises me that the applicant has, has been pushing for a supermajority.
Excuse me?
That's, that's why I'm surprised that the applicant is asking for a supermajority, because this plays...
No, they're not asking, it's a requirement of a special permit.
Yeah, special permit. Yes, I understand, but offline conversation.
What would your answer be?
Yeah, so the way it would work is if two members on the board were at that point, say disqualified from voting, at that point, the applicant could only, at that point, really get a site plan review approval, they wouldn't be able to get a special permit approval, so they would have to withdraw without prejudice.
Just for the special permit, though? Or for the whole thing?
The full application, because remember...
Wow.
The site plan is based, is based on what the special permits are, because some of the special permits allow for waivers and, you know, other things that imply, are implied on, and showed on the site plan, so you can approve the site plan without approving that special permit.
Gotcha.
So they would have to withdraw without prejudice and resubmit.
That's a costly, yeah.
I've seen it done, I actually had it done in Salisbury, we actually had to do this, we had, we had five, we have a five-member, six-member board, five are sitting, one is an alternate, two were recused, two had to recuse themselves, the alternate then became an actual member, so like the whole board got rearranged, what they did was, they withdrew and re-notified, resubmitted, and then they had the four members sit.
Wow.
Yeah, it's not, it's not an easy thing, but it happens, sometimes what'll happen is towns will just waive the fees for, because you don't have to resub, you know, the submission fees, they'll waive, you know, notice, legal notice fees and all that.
So there's no constructive approval involved in this action?
No, constructive approval only occurs if the applicant, if the Planning Board does not act within that 90, 90 or 60 days.
Or doesn't have enough people to do it in a meeting, it's, we've had it happen in the past, there's been several projects in this town that have got constructive approval.
Not just, and not just...
Subdivisions included.
Not just this board, there's been commission action that didn't happen, so, yeah, well, so I know of not acting, but I have never heard of because the board did not...
Harvitz had constructive approval, Ayers had constructive approval, because of lack of action.
Well, lack of action, yes, I agree, but...
People just didn't show up.
Not because there's only, there weren't enough members.
No, no, not to do with that Mullin situation.
Okay, okay, yeah, I was going to say, because that I have never heard of.
Yeah, no, it's got nothing to do with that, so that's, that's what I had, thank you.
Yes.
Like to open up for public comment, if, did you want to weigh in on this, sir?
Uh, well...
Just step up, name, address, the usual spiel.
John Oles, I've been the way. Okay, the only thing that, that really brought me here is, because I read through all of that, and first of all, it does say that you have to hold a hearing, and second of all, it said...
You have to have a hold, a hold a hearing for what?
For the Mullin Rule discussion.
Yeah, the hearing you're holding tonight needed to be held in order to adopt this bylaw change. And then, second of all, it said that it needed to be adjoined with the selectmen before it goes any further, and then I looked at the town calendar, and it's already on the town calendar for a town meeting, so I'm thinking, okay, well, that's kind of the cart before the horse kind of thing, and I was just trying to wrap my head around the whole thing. And, and the other thing is, I was just curious, is where is this law?
Eric, would you like my coffee?
I know, I know this, the one you voted, but the one that says to miss a meeting, because I tried to find that, and I, and I searched the town side, and searched, I searched I, I searched the general laws, you know, section five and the thirty-nine and all that. I never saw that and I've never heard of that. And I don't know how many people on boards do that. And it just came out of the blue.
So.
Didn't come out of the blue except in the air, unfortunately.
So most towns in Massachusetts have already adopted this.
Well, I can understand adopting it, but I didn't know that anybody knew a need to adopt it.
Well, the state, the state law actually says, the state law says it. If you look at, if you read that section, if you read the second section, it says towns must, towns and cities must adopt this state law.
I understand it, I read that. But, but to generate the need for it.
Oh.
Have you ever heard of the law that if you miss a meeting that you're exempt?
It's not a law.
It's, it's, it's not a law, it's a court case. And that's where the Mullen's rule was created because of that court case.
So how are boards held to that liability of having not being able to vote? If they weren't aware that that even existed?
That's an excellent question. And not all proponents for projects understand that this exists also. So in many ways, and I'm not being casual when I say this, but boards go along actually the way they happen.
Exactly, I never heard of it.
We never heard of it.
And if you, and as I said earlier, a casual look through what you can see in the public forum, not again, again, I have not, don't have access to the law that, to the law anymore.
At first I thought my concerns were mute because it's already on, already on the October calendar to be on the ballot.
So, yeah, just to explain that, with, when it comes to a general bylaw, and this is from KP Law, general bylaws do not require a public hearing to be recommended to town meeting. Only zoning bylaws are required to, when the planning board is proposing them. A general bylaw does not need a public hearing. But we, we did talk, I, I did let KP Law and the town manager know that we were still going to have one.
Okay, because when I read section five, where that is all pointed out, it did say that there was a planning board meeting required. And.
That's, this is straight from KP Law.
Okay, so. I don't know if you're reading the same thing, that's section five?
A town, town council is what I'm saying. Town council is the one who opined on this.
Okay, well, it's mute now anyway because it's going before the town.
Yeah, so what, what's gonna occur here is there's gonna be a recommendation.
Yeah, I'd read, I'd read all that. And the only other thing that caught me here was Ken was talking about a client withdrawing. That's happened, that's happened to our board a couple of times.
Right.
Yeah, if they look around and we're missing a member, they say we want to, we want to continue. Because they don't have faith that they can get a nameless. So they just say, we're gonna continue. It's happened twice this year.
Right, but the thing that I, the thing that I find interesting is the fact that this came, the way I understand it from the research I did, and everybody can correct me if I'm wrong, is it did come about as a, as a case. So there's gotta be something somewhere in the law that said you, how these boards have to be organized and the fact that you can't miss. Because the, the Mullen people, their attorney, they were in front of, was it Dedham? Was it the town, I think it was Dedham.
I forget which town it was.
One of the towns, anyway. And they were going down, they were losing. And then as a result of that, because there was people missing, they got smart and said, we're not gonna lose. We're gonna, we're gonna tell them, we're gonna enforce this rule. And they took them to the Supreme Court or whatever it was, and they won. So they were able to restart the whole process again to their advantage somewhat and get a clean.
Well, I think this is great because at some point it could have hit us. Because somebody would have known something.
Oh, yeah.
And they would have called us.
Someone was gonna call us on it. Exactly right, right.
That almost occurred here to us.
We're living it.
It's tough being a volunteer in this world today.
Perfect attendance apparently is expected, but they don't tell you that when you.
I'm gonna double your salary again.
I know, I agree.
Again, so that, that's why I made that point about the distinction of public meeting and public hearing.
Yes.
And we just have to be very conscious of the distinction and the significance moving forward. Any other discussion?
Move that we recommend as presented to the select board to include the warrant article regarding the Mullen's rule general bylaw for the October twenty-third, twenty-twenty-three town meeting.
Thank you, Jeff. A second?
Second. Oh, you seconded it?
No, you go ahead.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All in favor of making this recommendation?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, unanimous.
Move to close the public hearing for the Mullen's rule general bylaw recommendation to October twenty-third, twenty-twenty-three town meeting.
I just had one.
Hold on.
Sorry.
Go ahead.
Before you move, the next step to take it to the select board, who amongst this group? Is it you that takes?
So what I'll do is I will talk to Robert and let him know that the planning board made their recommendation to the select board. And I'll see if, if he wants me there or what he wants to do on there.
You may even have to, you know, it's gonna be in the minutes.
Okay, but.
We may not, we may not even need to have someone.
I can point out that I missed the meeting and I.
It's your fault and that's why we're doing this.
Is that what you thought? You want me to show up? I am the one that's on the meeting. I have no problems doing that.
I just want to make sure that the timing, I think John has a valid point that we have to move quickly here.
Yes, yes.
To get on the warrant and so forth, so didn't want to miss the next opportunity with the select board.
If you need me to attend as the example, I will.
Did you, we have a motion, was it seconded?
It was, yep.
It was?
No, I cut into the motion.
I seconded it.
I cut into the motion.
Okay, so we do now have a second from Julie Murray. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of this recommendation?
Aye.
Yes, closing.
I mean, closing, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, closing the Mullen's discussion. All in favor of closing?
Yes.
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, did you vote?
Aye.
All right, thank you. I'm gonna call a five-minute recess and we'll be coming right back and then we can talk about project updates. Thank you, everybody.
Sounds good.
Danny, can you take us to the project status updates, please?
Yes. Uh, so, uh, first one is there's going to be an application coming in for, from National Grid for the corner of Bishop Road and Park Street. They're looking to expand.
Again?
So.
That's what I said.
That's exactly what he said to me.
That's the big project.
There was a meeting, I, I believe there was a land use meeting that occurred in March, based on the emails that I have, where both of you had attended for this, to discuss this. Nothing actually ever came about, they never applied, but they did reach out and tell us that they will be applying for it soon. Uh, it's gonna be including a prefab building, uh, some storm water that they're gonna have to do. There's gonna be some wetlands and so there's gonna be quite a bit of work on there. I won't know until I see the actual application and, and the information. At that point, I can give you guys a little bit more.
And they were just there with all that cribbing, doing all the upgrades, all the lines. But anyway, that's their business.
It's great. So, did you know one month they anticipate coming before us?
So he had told us in the next couple of days he was going to be submitting. And, and I did explain to him that our, for the deadline for the October tenth meeting is this Friday. So he now has that on his schedule and he knows that.
Okay, good.
Uh, the next one is Curly Circle. There, it's going to be before the board at the next meeting for street acceptance recommendations. They are, at this point, Dan and the DPW director has, has already done all his inspections. We gave them the rebound release last time. They just have a list of, of some open items that they need to get done. Dan did say that typically the planning board has, has allowed the applicant to finish their punch list up until town meeting. So we can also discuss that, that next meeting.
Okay.
And I can get you guys the punch list as well.
Thank you.
Uh, Shaker Mill Pond, they have started talking, reaching out to see where, what they need to do for street acceptance. Obviously, at this point, they will not be making street acceptance for the fall. They'll be making it hopefully for the spring. So Dan and I and Heather have been, and Charlie have been working on creating a list of things that they need to get done, making sure, going through the conditions that they've gotten everything. So we're working on that as well.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair. Take a moment and go over and look at the Shaker Mill Pond project, guys. It's actually quite a nice little neighborhood. And I was over riding, I was riding my cycling through the other day and I went in and had a great conversation with a couple of residents over there who actually, who, they, they love it. It's a great, great neighborhood. And as an aside, the proponent did work on Snake Hill Road. He had to cut into the road to do the Forest Main and the patching that they had done had receded. He came in and fixed it.
Great.
He, he came in, it's, it's beautiful, so.
Yeah, I am curious with all the water that we've had this summer with, you know what I'm talking, there's that, I don't know what you call it, where the, where the paper, where that road is, not, not the real road, but the old.
The old paper road?
The old paper road, you know, with that, that little dam-like structure there? If that's held up in place or it's just been blown out?
Well, the asphalt patching that we asked Mr. Harho to take care of, at some point, he took care of it.
Yeah, he's a pro.
So it's, it's nice to work with developers who do what's asked of them and get it done in a timely fashion.
I was gonna mention that on Shaker Mill Pond, one of the issues that high out there was the conservation restriction. I don't know if there may be.
We've already started discussions with them. Heather has reached out to his attorney.
That's been going on for a long.
Yes, yes, yeah, I know. So I know last night, when Heather gave me an update, she said she had reached out to the, their attorney like two weeks prior and hadn't heard anything back yet, but that she was gonna follow up with them.
Because what, what happened there is Curly Circle had Alex Para as their aide and Alex kind of, and that's when Joey and Kristoff, that was the first one, I think, was Curly Circle. And they kind of spearheaded that along. But it seemed, and Dan Harho was like lost in the weeds there. And then COVID was coming along and it was like, there's nobody in the department.
Yeah.
So we had language in there, I thought, about, well, you know the language, huh?
Yeah, so in, in, actually in the decision, it says prior to the first occupancy, that the CR must be submitted to the town and already approved to by, by the Concom Select Board and by EOEA. Just on that topic, I think the, going forward to avoid this issue, I think it's prior to last occupancy, I think that's how it's best to do it because CRs are typically done at the end of a project because you need to know the limits of work, you need to know where the open space is, you need to know where the bounds are, there's an open space, there's a plan that goes along with the CRs.
He has bills too.
Yes, exactly. So typically, this is, CRs are done at the end of the project. And I, I understand where you guys were coming from on why you guys wanted that, to make sure it got done. But it's just changing the timing is all. We'll have to change it to prior to the final occupancy. That way.
Well, that's your recommendation.
That would be my recommendation, correct, yes, yes. My recommendation would be to move it to prior to final occupancy. That way, that last unit is, is, at that point, most developers want to get out. They have that last unit, they're not gonna want to get held up by a CR.
I think the risk of being held up for one unit is somewhat easier than the risk of being held up for twenty or so units.
The problem with that is then you're not getting a good CR.
No.
Because the limits of work are not shown at the proper, you're not showing your monumentation, they're not showing the pictures that they're supposed to go with the baseline monitoring report. There's a lot that goes into CRs. I've, I've done a couple of them and you want to do them at the end, in, in my opinion.
Well, we held a lot of this money, so it's okay.
Yeah, that's good, thank you.
Let's have the last one, very last five percent.
So Shaker Mill Pond, National Grid.
We're, we're, we're on Shaker Mill. I just want to say that that's a great example of how our input really helped improve a project. I mean, I'm so grateful that we saved that large boulder. I mean, it seems like a small thing, but when you look at the space and how it breaks it up and keeps it from being one sightline of buildings in a row, and the way that we also ask them to do certain modifications, it sits better. And I think that what we're seeing is the fruit of those deliberations, that when there's mutual back and forth in discussion, you do end up with a better project and the people who live there are happier. And then, and the town is happier because it looks better, it functions better.
One of the things, you just reminded me of something, if you don't mind, Mr. Chair. And that is that we had quite a number of road changes there that you wouldn't be aware of during the process. And not the least of which was the final resolution of shortening the road and then putting that circle in on the far left-hand side with two family units. Originally had no two families, they were all single families.
Okay.
So it was longer, went down.
There were long driveways, yeah, there were long driveways.
Chained driveways, not even chained, whatever they were.
Yeah, boy, I remember it was ugly.
But that was a perfect example of, of the fact that in A2, with a special permit, we were allowed to put in the two families. And that, you know, we, the jurisdiction fell under us as a, as a special permit. Because in other situations, members of, some members of the public have brought up that we cannot issue the, the special permits for two families. It belongs with the zoning board of appeals because of the table. But because it was in a OSRD application, it, it gave that privilege to the planning board. So that was very, very important. And we did the concurrent, there were three meetings, I think, at the same time. We had the land clearing, special permit for that in the subdivision, OSRD. So there were three concurrent.
And that was also one of the first applications we worked very closely with the conservation.
Absolutely, yeah.
And the, and the idea of going to Maltese at the end and shortening the whole project and bringing it back up off the pond was really a member of the Conservation Commission saying, did anybody think about this?
Yeah.
And, and it was very, it's honestly really helpful.
It was.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, and there's also was a piece of isolated wetland on the right when you went in.
That's right.
That was a former gravel, gravel pit owned by Sandville. And they had basically stripped the whole thing and blasted some chunks here and there. So there was one piece on the, entering on the right, maybe between the first, the first two family and the last single family.
Okay.
And conservation voted that that was non-jurisdictional. And that made a big difference, and it really was. It was, I bet you if you went over, there was like nothing in it.
Yeah, and it's probably.
I bet you today there's some water in it.
It could be now, right, but all those little.
It was created by the construction, which, you know, it, sometimes you're like, it shouldn't be one, but I've seen boards where they're just like.
Could be ruled that way.
Exactly.
We had to, the determination if the water was a stream or a pond.
Yeah, right. Oh, yeah, she went out with.
Tennis balls. A stream or a pond?
Yeah, because it was.
Because.
I'm sorry, those are like two completely opposite.
Moving water is a hundred, a hundred-foot jurisdictional, moving water is two hundred-foot. And, and moving water would have nixed that entire project. Only if it was considered a stream, because an intermittent would not be considered that.
Well, Danny, we were.
You're trying to make it a stream.
We were different places a few years ago.
I feel like I should sing Memories. Memories.
Sorry, sorry. But no, I know, honestly, if you drive in there and you take a moment at the turnaround and look out, the boulder breaks it up, you don't see anything on the right-hand side going out. It gives privacy to those, all the buildings as you're driving on the left-hand side.
People like it.
It's just great.
We're encouraging, thank you.
Thank you. Any, does anything further on the project?
The last one would be Harvard Road. We had anticipated them coming for the twenty, for the twenty-fifth, the twenty-sixth, twenty-sixth. They are not going to be making it for the twenty-sixth, it's gonna be, at this point, I think, the October tenth.
Okay, thank you.
And that, that's going to be the same meeting that Shaker, the Stratton Hill will be here.
Oh, boy.
Yes.
Excellent, good.
Should we bring our jammies?
What is the Harvard Road?
Harvard Road, twenty-seven to twenty-nine Harvard Road. It's.
Teddy's Honey Hut.
Yeah.
Out of compliance.
It's been out of compliance for quite a long time, for three, about three years.
Okay, it's a, it's a site plan.
It is, it's site plan review because of the change of use.
Oh, okay, okay.
Actually, you can put a zero behind that three. It's never been in compliance.
Yeah, there's, there's, there's a lot of issues going on down there that we're actually, we're dealing with.
Can I bring something up?
Please do.
So that reminded me of something that I'm not sure Danny's aware of, that we did change the zoning there and we have to change our zoning map.
Yep, so I had originally had that proposed to try to take that for this town meeting. We didn't get the timing right to getting the updated zoning, zoning map from MRPC with getting some funds allocated and stuff. So I'm still working on trying to get that done, but that'll be on for the next one. Yeah, that other one, it's basically rezoning those two properties to general business.
Right.
Yeah.
They've been rezoned?
Yes, through town meeting.
Right.
But the actual map has never been, has not been adjusted yet.
I get it. But you're saying the map has to go to town meeting?
Mm-hmm.
No, that's not what our history has been.
Uh, zoning maps, I'll, I'll double check that and confirm that with, but zoning maps are.
We changed the zoning and subsequent to that, we updated the map and we signed it right now.
For, for.
That is what we did last time, but you should.
I will confirm with, with town council on that because I'm pretty sure zoning maps, any zoning map change has to go to town meeting. But maybe the chart, maybe there's a charter is different, maybe there's.
Maybe, so we were operating under the principle that the zoning had to be changed and then the zoning had to be, the accepted had to be changed, you know, accepted.
Town meeting.
At the town meeting and at the Attorney General. And then subsequent to all of that, we updated the map with MRPC and we signed it.
Yes, that is, that is, that is the process.
That's exactly what we did.
And there may be some history on this and it's an offline conversation.
Okay.
All right, so something to look into.
I'll look into that.
That's what we did, I'm just telling you.
Yep, I'll look into that.
Looking to see what.
We'll, we'll leave it there.
Which avoids the fact that you have to have an article on a town meeting because you've already voted the zoning change.
Yeah, I know.
You simply, I've got, I've got it right here, actually. So it's okay, don't worry about it.
And if I may.
This is a little, because you're changing the zoning and typically what happens is when you're changing zoning lines, you have to. Well, I'll go to, I'll talk to.
Yeah, talk to someone, but I can tell you that's what we did, well, everyone agrees, right?
I remember. And if I may.
I believe that we signed it.
I got a letter from.
We signed it, exactly.
Mr., Mr. Chair, I got a letter from Mr. Eaton, Glenn Eaton today, the executive director for MRPC. It was about what happened with the rainfall just west of us.
Yeah, I did see that too.
Officially over 11 inches of rain. So what has happened is MRPC, believe it or not, is being slammed with repairdness work. Now, we've done ours in air and you've got to find some.
Do hazard mitigation plans.
But hazard mitigation, repairdness work. We did one recently in town, which is in pretty good shape.
Yeah, we actually just met with MRPC, I think it was two weeks ago.
Yeah, but just so you know, MRPC is going to be all hands on deck. Because with, with a state of emergency declared out there, MRPC has to focus on that. So I would be surprised if we can get, if we can get a map out of them.
At this point, I know it, we're not going to.
It's kind of like COVID, just happened.
Yeah, I understand.
I mean, they've got serious infrastructure problems.
Danny, you want to take us through the, your proposed revisions, the air planning board application for site plan review?
Yeah.
Can you, no, it'd be helpful, just show us what's different from what used to be, just talk us through it.
I can go through that with you. So the first thing you're going to notice is different. At the bottom, there is a section that says applicants shall set up a pre-application meeting with the town planner and building commissioner. So I spoke with Charlie about this. This will help reduce any issues on the, so I don't want to use specific projects. We've, there's projects that have been, that have been submitted before us that haven't had all of the special permits, all of the, you know, requirements of applications that they needed when they submitted. And as through the process of reviewing the applications and having meetings, we've found more and more. This meeting with the, with the building commissioner and myself will avoid any of those issues. We will, we'll be able to review the application, the site plans and anything other, any other applicable information that we can, we'll need at these, at this meeting. And we can give the applicant at that point and say, oh, you missed this special permit or this special permit. So add that applicant into your application and then you can make your submission.
My one question is, is that contestable? In other words, are we open to the possibility, so and say, well, listen, this is just for the planning board, why are you introducing a building commissioner to this process? Is that, could that ever be a contestable issue?
No, so the building inspector, building commissioner is the one who determines what the applications are.
By law?
Yeah. He's the zoning enforcement officer for the planning board.
That's what I'm getting at.
Yes.
That's why it's on the record, thank you.
Good. I think you have a good question, so first of all, I'd like, like to know, Danny, if you think it would be better, since the size of the type above is whatever font that is, this font should be a little bit bigger.
Okay.
At the bottom. And you're, you're basically saying the meeting occurred on this date, meaning the meeting of the two.
Yes, yes.
With the applicant.
Yes.
Maybe the building commissioner should have a slash and say, building commissioner slash zoning enforcement officer.
Yeah, I can have that.
Yeah, that's a good idea, let's do that.
So that we know that he's the zone, because the zoning questions are what's going to come up.
Yes, yes, exactly.
Yep.
Why is it not a step within the filing instructions?
You know what, that's a good point. I should put that as, as number one.
There you go.
Yeah, just make that number one.
That's a, that's a great point.
You know, just move it right on up and then it's, then you got your, everything's equal, both.
Just you have to be careful with the language, it says, must also provide.
Yeah, I'll rewrite it in a way that, that.
Just goes above it?
Yes, maybe it goes above it or maybe, I'll make it cohesive, so it reads well. So that's really all that changed on the first page. The second page, I just kind of updated it in the sense of made it look a little bit neater.
Yeah.
I did add under the site information, the current use as well as wetlands on the property and the approximate square footage.
That's helpful.
Just so that we have all that information.
Approximate square footage of the wetland.
Yes. That way, I feel like, you know, that's important information for the planning board to understand. So that was really it, other than just kind of cleaning it up and making it look a little bit neater. On the next page, so I included these checkboxes, so this whole application is fillable by PDF.
Nice.
We can avoid having to handwriting and all that. It's just check off the box and then.
Well, I can go right in there and just start typing and fill it.
Exactly, you can check off that box and then on the, on the next couple of sections where it says the checklist for submission, it's a drop-down box, you just click yes or no or not applicable. And we'll do that throughout the whole thing.
Yep.
One thing Jonathan did raise to me was about the waivers. So in our planning board rules and regs, there is a section that says, and I think this is the, this is what you're talking about. Under Article 15 waivers for the rules and regulations, the air planning board may waive any of the provisions of these rules and regulations, as well as any regulations referenced in these rules and regulations by majority vote of the board in circumstances where the strict implementation of the particular application or circumstance is detrimental or counterproductive to the larger issue or application before it. And such, where such waivers will not be in violation of local, state or regulation by law or statute. So that's, I think that's the section you wanted me to reference.
Isn't that, I think, there was. Yeah, there was something, I remember adding language at one point that, you know, waivers, they have to demonstrate, one, that it's either not applicable or two, it provides superior benefit to the town. And we put that somewhere.
That is out of our planning board rules and regulations?
Oh, we have a site plan.
So I actually looked through the site plan regulations and I did not find a waiver section in there. And that's where, that's why I was, I wasn't sure. Yeah, that's why I was a little confused as to.
Remember, we did add that language, do you recall that, Jeff?
I remember the language, I don't remember the case.
So I got July 10th of 2018 as the site plan.
Yeah, that's correct, that's what I had too.
Should be at the end somewhere. Either that or it's right back in the actual bylaws.
And, yeah, so I looked in the bylaws as well, I couldn't find any sections about it. Typically, what I've seen in our bylaws is in the sections of like, you know, nine, section nine, there's a section about waivers. Then there's like section six, there's a section about waivers.
A section about waivers in each one.
Typically, there's a, there's a section about waivers in each section, so I don't know.
So it could be in a subsection somewhere is what you're getting at, right?
Yeah, it's possible. I did try to look through, I looked through the planning board section, all of the zoning board sections. It's possible that, that, the way you guys had talked about the writing, maybe it was in one of the other sections for a specific one.
It could be in the subdivision regulations.
It might be, it actually might be in the subdivision.
Subdivision regulations.
I'll look for the language that says describe why you need the waiver.
Correct, yes, and, and I was just kind of, oh, here it is, I think this is what you're talking about.
It's like benefit.
Is it this one?
Is it, when we were doing the firehouse on Washington Street. They had waivers and we, the benefit of doing stuff in that building outweighed many of the things that would keep it from going forward.
So the waiver language is.
That's from the, that's from the.
Section four. B. No, I'm sorry, section four, C, numbers one through three, the number one, paragraph one reads, in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 41, subsection 81R, the board may waive strict compliance with these rules and regulations. Such waiver may only be granted if the planning board first reaches a finding that such waiver is both in the public interest and not inconsistent with the intended purpose of the subdivision control on these rules or regulations.
Remember that meeting, that, that meeting we had, that we discussed, that just came back through to my memory.
Memories again.
I could, I could hear Mark's voice as you read that.
So what I, I would propose is basically very similar to this.
I can put it over the screening.
Get it to the, into the planning board rules and regs.
I think we should.
Yeah, I would put it into the planning board rules and regs because then that gives you the authority across all the, all your other rules and regulations. But to change our planning board rules and regs, we have to have a public hearing.
I understand that.
I just, I just wanted everyone to know.
Future memories that we can have.
No, I guess the more germane thing is for all of the things where they could possibly check requesting, where there's some things they obviously, they probably can't. I mean, you can't request a waiver for establishing the date of a site plan. So you may want to black out some of these.
Yeah.
That I was interested in.
Yeah, it was, I merely kind of copied what, what the previous application had and just added drop boxes, like a drop-down box for everything. So if there is, I agree with you, the ones that can't really.
My guess is there's going to be ones that are applicable, not applicable based on the project, based on the location.
Yes.
And so it's going to be a challenge.
Right, but for instance, there'll never be a case where you.
Where the general information.
Yeah, the general information, you don't provide the owner of record for it.
That one I can cross almost everything off because most people will not, it's after that where, you know, buildings, landscaping and all the other stuff, that word definitely, so you're right. I will, I can.
The owner, the person who controls the property has to be here for the request.
So basically, you're looking for them to just check these boxes as they go down and use them as their own guidelines.
Exactly, and, and that's, these are exactly out of our site plan review, regulations.
And you could just look out of the glance and know if it's complete, which is valuable and saves time.
How do we clear that box up that says requesting waiver and get it to where, down here someplace?
Well, so what I'll do is I can, I'll clean this up, I'll just kind of cross this one out and. I can, I think leaving the requesting waiver at the top is fine and what I'll do is just kind of black these out. And then that way, going forward, they know on every page it's going to be that, that section is waivers.
Looks good.
And so what I'll add is, under the for any requested, please provide reasoning for requests, I can add, well, I can't add this because it's not in our site plan review bylaw, but I can add, you know, the section about.
I would just use a language per.
I'd just let them figure out if the waiver is legit or not. We can figure the language out later.
Yeah.
Okay. I think that's fair.
There's a couple of typos I found, if you're interested in.
Okay.
Where is it? Three.
Three?
Yeah, 5A.
5A.
Traffic flow pattern, maybe patterns.
Oh, yep.
And another one had any spelt wrong somewhere. Here it is here, 3G.
3G.
Location of NAY.
You don't know what a NAY is? That's a very specific planning term.
I've got something, I've got something about hazardous materials after the meeting, I'll mention to you guys.
Okay.
So, may I?
Yes.
3K?
3K.
Management systems.
Location and description of all.
Of all stormwater managements, systems, I believe it would be management, not.
Yep.
Plural.
Is it really a description that they give us? I guess when they do the stormwater report, it'll have it as.
Yes, yeah, there is a description.
Yep.
And just a final nitty-gritty thing, if you're going to use periods at all, use them consistently or not use them, you know, because some of them have periods, just.
Yep.
One or the other.
Okay.
You know, again, nitty kind of thing.
Yeah, no.
While you're cleaning it up, I'm also cleaning it up.
Yeah, exactly.
Are you a period two spacer, period one spacer guy?
I'm going to give you the conclusive answer to that. The period two space was a product of a typewriter, a curvier font, and it was necessary to make that distinction. Now that we no longer use typewriters to create our documents, it's, it's a one space.
Does it already put some extra little.
I did not know that, you learn something new every day.
I knew exactly why I was.
I've never used a typewriter, so that's probably why, but.
I used a typewriter.
Yeah, I've used it.
It was quite, it was quite.
I don't think, my eldest son, was in his thirties, said to me today, just like your dad, two spaces.
I said, okay, thank you. I got one that you can borrow. A son or a typewriter?
Maybe he has both.
Look, can you just give us a little explanation on, while we're doing this, on 3E?
3E.
How you interpret that?
So, let's see what we have here.
Any stormwater environmental, location and estimated yield of any groundwater aquifers in wellhead protection.
So that is straight out of our site plan review regulations. I think that would occur more for a location like you're in the aquifer protection, you know, and you're using an irrigation well, you're using, you know, something that you're taking groundwater out of the, you know, you're taking out groundwater. It's so that to make sure that you're not going to be depleting any.
Aquifers.
Any aquifers and if there's a well protection district, like because the town has wells, there's a 200 and.
It's 200.
It's like 200-foot radius around each of those protections, so it's to make sure that those aren't affected as well.
Oh, it's worded weird, so what you're looking at is you need the location of the groundwater aquifers and wellhead protection. The estimated yield is just refers to the groundwater aquifer, right?
Yeah.
I'm not going to get into grammar here, just, just leave it.
Yeah.
Got it, no, I'm good with it.
There's nobody filling this out who's going to beat you up on the grammar.
I don't think so. I doubt it.
They, they've got that figured out long before they get to that line and they're just going to put in the numbers.
So I just want to tell you quickly why this one period, one space, two space thing matters. So I'm a copywriter, so I submit copy to something that's ultimately, a designer is going to load into a document that can be reproduced. If I double space, I'm creating work for the designer, they've got to strip every single one of those things out. And I learned early, don't do that.
Ipsum. Any other comments?
No, look, I think it's great.
Looks great, Danny.
Thank you, Danny, I think this is well done and we definitely need it.
And so what I'll do is I'm also going to do the special permit, the A and R and the subdivision applications as well. Just to make sure that everything's, you know, looks the same and cohesive.
So, okay, great. Regarding the fee schedule.
Yes.
I have one question prior to jumping to the next.
Yeah.
And I know, I know the agenda item is to update, project update and sub to that site plan review application, but during the project status update, how are the land use meetings going?
Oh, no, good question.
So we've, just in general. We've only had one so far.
Yeah, okay.
We have not had any others. I anticipate having one with this new application coming forward. But we have not had one, we've only had one, which was in the beginning of August.
Yeah, so it's not that, it's not that, it's not been, usually they were once a month or as things came forward.
Yeah, so when I took over, I, I wanted to make sure that I wasn't creating meetings just to create meetings. And then, so I'm going to have the land use meetings when they're actually necessary, when we have applications that are before us and not potential applications. Because those meetings are not productive if you don't actually have plans, you don't have information in front of you, so.
I agree. And if you have a working relationship with the other departments on, on a day-to-day basis.
Yes.
Land use meetings become less.
Yes.
They're necessary but less required, if I can say it that way.
Yes. And, and, and that is one thing that I have been making sure to do is there's the, we've been, I've been doing a lot of communication with Charlie and as well as with Conservation to make sure that we're all going to be on the same page, same with DPW. So I'm trying to make sure that we're communicating.
And you've discovered how hard it is to work with public safety in this town too, right? With fire employees.
I like that.
They're not bad.
They're not bad at all.
No.
They're great.
So.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome. What I was wondering for, you know, I was thinking about process for the discussion of the fee schedule and I wonder if the simplest is the best. And then is to just say, Danny, what do you think? And then the rest of us can bounce off of that. Julie thinks it's a good way. Because, no, I appreciate this work there and it's great, but I feel that without having a sense of a number, we could just end up deliberating for hours and hours and hours without making progress. And, and I was thinking, you know, if you could just come out and state an opinion, then we can all come back at you. Jeff, what do you, do you contest that?
I think that's awesome, I'm going to ask for kind of like, as we look at these columns, these are the current fees, not the recommended fees.
Correct.
Okay, so wherever it says air is current.
So, that's it. That's all I wanted to double check and I agree with you, Mr. Chair, I don't think our fees are high enough, so. So my recommenda, so do we want to go by, you know, one by one?
Start at the top.
Because if you're not ready for that, we can post, we can.
I've, I've.
Give me some thought?
Yes, I have.
Little opinions.
I do have an opinion, okay, so what do you think for A and R?
So I think, you know, based on the, the way we have our application, it's $50 per each lot. I think the Littleton is more where I would go, where it's 100 for the application and 100 per each buildable lot that gets created. That would be my recommendation.
Can we go down through, I'm going to note which ones Danny, Danny's recommending?
Yeah, I'm going to put that.
So Danny recommends the Littleton for A and R, okay?
Preliminary, so this one, I was leaning more towards Salisbury, the $500 plus the $200 for each new buildable lot.
Okay, so because these are on multiple pages.
Oh, yeah.
I just, yeah, put it next to each other.
Should we comment now or do we want to wait till the end?
I mean, we can go, we can comment.
Yeah, let's, let's do the, let's start with the A and R and the preliminary since, because it's basically one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, right? So let's start with the A and R.
I'm sorry, I read some. Go ahead. I'm perfectly fine with the recommended.
I'm sorry, it caused you distress to not have every paper out.
So, you're okay, are we all right here?
No, he's out of character right now and I was upset about it.
So we're looking at for the A and R, initial, you know, the ground application, 100 bucks plus $100 for each lot under consideration. Well, it's still a good value compared to most of the other towns. It's still a decent deal. And I don't think that's overly onerous to a small potato.
What I'm gonna ask is that we, our main, our application fee is currently $115. If I'm, don't, if I'm reading this correctly.
Mm-hmm.
I say it's 115 and a hundred per lot after that.
Yeah, let's do that.
That'd be my motion for that one.
How, yeah, how do we, do we need to vote on each of these or?
No, so what I'll do is, uh, uh, once we've kind of come to a consensus on which ones we wanna do, I'll create an actual fee schedule and then at that point.
And we can vote on it.
We would have, we would have a, a vote on it.
Okay, great. So it looks like we're, so far.
In a situation where A and R is a single lot, we don't backpedal 15 bucks, that's all I'm saying.
That sounds fair, yeah, smart, good call. The preliminary plan.
Yes. There's, there's, there's quite a few different ways you could really do it. Uh, some have it by linear foot of the road, some have by buildable lot. So it's really, you know, where you wanna go, if you do it by linear foot, you're, you really decrease how many, how long of a road you're going to have. But that can also, it, it kind of cuts both ways because they could have a really short, they could have a shorter road. And then it's not that big of an application fee, but they could still have, figure out ways to kind of create, still have quite a few lots.
You mean like, like dogleg, um.
Mm-hmm, cuz we do not, cuz we don't have shape, uh, shape factor in, uh, in here.
Exactly, and that's what I really don't wanna see.
Yes, so that's, that's also something I've, as looking through our bylaws, you know, I, I, that is another thing that I wanna add is a shape factor. It reduces having any of those pork chop lots that you're, you get these really long fingers and, and when you create a subdivision that just runs like, cuz they, they don't have enough frontage, but they wanna.
Yeah, I know.
So many lots, so.
I know.
Kinda gets rid of that, but that's.
We, we've been calling them flag lots, but pork chops, same thing.
Yeah, same thing.
One of the things that's not on here right now, I, I'm gonna ask a question, where does OSRD fall? An application type?
Next one.
Uh, definitive plan? Okay, that includes OSRD. Because one of the things, um, I think the board has done it subconsciously, but recognizes the value of it is shorter roads. Shake a mill pond, curl a circle.
Mm-hmm.
There's 60, almost 60 units on not even a half a mile of road.
Yep.
As opposed to 60 units on almost four miles of road in old, so those 60 units will pay for their needs and contribute to the town. So I think I would, I would avoid linear footage. Because I think as a, as a, as a group, we are pushing people to density. So that's my only thought among that.
Mm-hmm.
Um, again, wouldn't move the application fee down and I don't think, I don't think $200 for building a lot is a lot.
Back on the preliminary plan?
We're back on preliminary plan. If you look at Salisbury, it's just basically 500 plus 200.
It looks just.
Yeah.
Sorry?
It looks just, yeah.
Okay.
I mean, yeah.
I mean, look at Maynard, you know, they want 750 per lot, you know, I mean, so.
There's only three lots left in the town.
Little apartment there.
It could be.
Have you, have you guys been to Maynard Crossing yet?
No.
Oh, don't drive in there, it's scary.
I built that project.
It's so scary and those parking lots.
I know.
Those parking lots are bad.
So, so are we liking the proposal of $500 base and then a 200 per lot?
Do we like that for preliminary?
I don't like it.
You don't like it? What would you like, Ken?
I think it's pretty hard to go from 50 to 200, plus the fact that the preliminary is gonna be followed by a definitive. Well, it doesn't have to, you don't have to do the preliminary, you can go right to the definitive.
You go right to definitive.
So the preliminary, you typically do that to lock in the zoning?
Right.
Yes, that's exactly right.
That's why, you know, most, you don't always see it, but most people will do it to lock in zoning. I think 200 per lot is not really, I mean, compared to the other towns in our area, I don't really think it's that much more. But it's just my opinion. I mean, Stowe is, application is 2,150 and then 110 per lot.
Westford's 600 for a new lot, for an application, uh, for a new lot and six for, I mean.
Six dollars for the linear foot.
I think it's a large jump in dollars, Ken. But in, in, in the, in the real world of what's going on out there, I don't think it's gonna push the cost of the project up. To be punitive on the, um, ultimate buyer. But we are looking at a limited number, a limited stock of, of area in this town that we can recoup our costs from.
I just have, I'm struggling with the fact that an A and R, which is pretty much a no brainer, you're gonna end up with a lot right away. For us, it's only a hundred dollars for a lot. Yet you're talking about 200 dollars for a preliminary plan, which you don't have a really guarantee on you.
Well, so the reason that is, is A and R's planning boards don't have to.
Enough words, it has to be done.
Yeah, the, the planning board doesn't have the authority to deny it. It, it's, it's, that's why it's an A and R approval not required. You're just endorsing it. A preliminary plan, it's, you're actually working through, with the applicant, working through the subdivision as to what it's gonna look like previous. Like, there's, there's a lot more to it. That's why. And I'm assuming this is 200 dollars per new building lot and that would be one, two, three or four, a, a single or a multifamily building on that lot. So we're not getting them, so if it's a four unit building, we're not getting 800 bucks for that lot, we're getting 200 dollars for that lot.
Yeah, but if you look next door at Groddin, you know, they've got, it's 250 for a new lot under A and R and it's 250 for a new lot under the application. Then it jumps up to 750.
For a definitive.
For a definitive plan.
Yeah.
But there, I mean, but if you look at their A and R, it's a hundred dollars per lot line change. That's a lot more.
Yeah.
You know, creating one lot, you're, it's a, it's, it's 250 and.
I don't need to like count lot line changes.
That's how Salisbury does it. So I had an application over there that was almost $4,000 cuz of the, how many lot lines they created. You know, they had these weird zigzags and trying to create, so.
Okay.
I wouldn't wanna have to adjudicate that one.
That might have been a railroad app, no.
But everyone else wants, it's fine with me.
200?
Yes.
So 200 for the preliminary, 100 for the applica, 500 for the application?
Mm-hmm. So.
Definitive, what are you thinking, Danny?
So the definitive, this one's a little bit more, uh.
Phew.
I was, I, it's a big jump in, across all of them compared to, uh, to air. So I kinda wanted to leave this open to the board on this one. This one's a little bit more of a, I feel the board should be the ones to choose this one. Just because of how big of a jump a lot of these are.
We have been very generous over the years on definitive plans.
There's an interesting twist to this when you look at Westford.
Hmm?
Yeah.
So now they got a unit cost.
Yep.
Mm-hmm.
So that does answer your question, Jeff.
Yeah.
Plus, right, that's something, per unit, per linear foot, wow.
Per linear foot.
And I, again, the linear foot.
I agree, let's.
I mean, I. I'm, I'm not, I'm not a proponent of linear footage charging, but that's just me, that's a personal.
Can I ask a question? Some of the towns on the second page that some of us have out, um, says that it's a different cost whether you had a preliminary plan or not. Do you recommend one or the other there, Danny?
Um, I, there, it's a yes and no. I like it because it usually makes people come in for a preliminary because it lowers the cost.
Yep.
But at the same time, not everyone's still going to listen, wanna do that and it's a really big cost after that. So it's good, it's also, it, it can have some, some deterrence. It, but it's really kind of, how does the board feel about how much that is?
So I'm gonna ask a question to the board. Do we have it within our powers on a project that comes in as a preliminary to grant them a lower definitive plan fee if requested? Under the planning board rules and regs, you have the authority to modify or waive the application fee?
Yeah.
So this is something that I struggle with less, you know, and. In a unit fee, okay, we've got something on West Main Street, which is 172 units. Okay? If they paid a preliminary fee and came in with a definitive fee, fee and we're looking at a large amount of money at times 175 units. Yes, that's huge, 172 units. I don't know how many more places in town we're gonna have something of that size or volume. I can think of a couple that might happen in the future, should zoning, so should zoning allow it? But this is part of the devens change, cuz we don't control that land.
The, the only thing I would say on this is it's, it's not a, uh, that project is not a subdivision?
I agree, so.
I understand that.
Okay, just.
But, but if you just take a look at subdivisions anywhere.
Yes.
You know, and we do, we do push for density, but all of a sudden we have the OSRD, which gives them benefits and stuff like that, so.
So I'll tell you, something I'm thinking about is that maybe we retain the numbers as they are for, with the preliminary plan. Because we do wanna encourage people to submit a preliminary, we wanna encourage that behavior. So I think that, you know, keeping it, the definitive modest, if they do the preliminary, preliminary makes sense to me. But I would say that without a preliminary, preliminary, we could really say application 2,000 plus somewhere between 400 and 500 per unit.
Okay, so kinda like the Maynard one. So if you're, if you're looking at me.
Kind of similar to that.
So you're, you're saying on the preliminary that you'd go back to 50 or 100 instead of 200?
I'd leave it at 200.
No, no, the preliminary fee.
But if, if you applied for the definitive and you haven't done a preliminary, it's higher than you have now.
Correct. If I, if I may, I think I, I got what he said is, applications without a preliminary and an application fee of $2,000 plus $400 per unit.
Yeah, four or five.
For each lot being, you know, with some number for a lot being created is what, is what.
That's right, and if they submitted a preliminary plan, that's our proposal, $500 application, 200 per unit. If they've done that already, then they get, if they submitted definitive after that, as it is now, 1,0250 per unit.
You know, there's, there's an interesting twist to our language. If that's the language we have right there, the way I'm reading it in that box, it says 250 for each lot being created.
Yep.
That's the exact language?
Yes.
Without the word building.
For each lot being created.
Okay, so.
Which would consider the roadway, which is your right of way, that is a lot.
What I'm saying is if I decide to have a half a dozen, um, lots in the back that are, well, they're not lots, actually, they'd be parcels. Do you pay for a parcel? If it's, if it's an unbuildable parcel, do you pay for the open space? That's a lot. I'm saying it should be the building lot, not just a lot.
I see what you're saying, I see what you're saying.
Building, uh, uh, like, just like we have new building lot.
If you've got the other ones that says building lot.
Yeah, just like, just Salisbury does.
To follow that thought, I have no trouble at all not charging them for land that's gonna go to conservation.
Me too.
Yeah, exactly, so.
By all means, the more land you got.
So building, building lot.
So.
It assumes building, I think, I, I, no, I agree with you, Ken, I, exactly what you said.
I think that is the assumption, but you can interpret it the way that Ken is saying. Because when you read that, it just says lot.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah. So basically it's two tiered, we have an application fee that is higher if they don't have a preliminary application, preliminary plan before us. Got it.
Do you like the numbers I suggested?
Yeah, so, so.
You said 2K for the original fee?
Yeah.
And you said four or 500 per building lot and I would go 500.
500?
So you're saying that the original application fee, the thousand plus the 250?
Is if they've submitted a preliminary.
Okay, with a preliminary.
Yeah, without a preliminary, with.
And then without would be?
Would be 2K plus 500 per lot.
Plus 500 per lot.
Okay.
So it's net cheaper to do them both.
How do we judge someone that came in with a definitive plan first, then came back with a preliminary plan second? You may come in with another preliminary plan.
You don't know what you're talking about.
That's up to them, that's what, if they wanna play that game, that's their game.
We've had that happen, that is their own choice.
That's their choice.
Their fee each time.
Yeah, that's their, if they do it that way, that's, you know, they're grownups.
We've got, we've got one where that was approved in 2005 and we're still playing the game.
What about the, uh, we have, do you have thoughts on the modification of a definitive?
Wouldn't change it.
I wouldn't change it.
Yeah.
You know, I'm, I'm, I'm fine with the modification of a definitive plan, cuz typically when you're coming in to modify a definitive plan, there's not really a lot that comes with it, they're usually not changing a million lots.
You know, it's, we get into this, get the con, is it a major or a minor change, that conversation?
540.
500 bucks, yeah.
215, where did they come up with those numbers? Okay. Stowe's weird.
Oh, you couldn't decide between two and 240.
It's got its own.
He just wanted to be different, like, okay. They like made up numbers.
Our site plan review is a hundred dollars, so.
No, which, which, which is this one?
Stowe.
Stowe.
Oh, well.
They like made up numbers, 2,157 cents, like, okay. Okay.
All right.
Sorry.
Special permit, we have it at 300. It's one of the lower ones.
I mean, so the special permit, I don't think is, is that big of an issue. I mean, I think what we could do is, if you want to differentiate between residential and commercial, you could. You know, commercial would be higher, residential would be lower, but I think if you keep it at 300, I think you're, you're, you're right hitting in the between.
All right, I like that.
Yep.
That seems consistent. And the next one is modification or extension of a special permit.
Yes.
And we have currently nothing.
We have nothing. So when someone wants to modify a special permit, there is no application fee and.
Kind of like Stowe's, 540 bucks, we don't know why.
They're all 540.
Excuse me, people in Stowe who heard me say that.
They're all 540 when you.
It's almost like 300 bucks.
Yeah, so it, it would, I think here is the occasion where, you know, the minor and major may, is, uh, may come in. Uh, if it's a minor modification of a special permit, uh, I would suggest like the Salisbury one.
That's what I was looking at.
You know, the 100 and the 200.
Yeah, and if you take a look at Groddin, it's 150 and 300, minor, major.
Yeah.
Either one.
I like the, I like the minor, I like the, I like the Salisbury numbers.
How do we determine what's minor or major?
You gotta get there.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, there's.
That's another problem.
Yeah, that is, well, so.
Yes.
There is in, um, the decisions, the, the draft decision template that I gave you guys. That gives you some language as to what minor and major is. Typically, minor is something that is not substantive, it's not a.
Right.
It's not a large change, it's not a big change, it's typically something very minute.
But is that language here being applied to the way we were looking at it before? Or is it a minor or major, major modification?
Uh, minor or major modification for the special permit. Yeah, it's, it would be like we would do for the site plan review, which is eventually another thing that we will need to discuss as well.
Westford had a mathematician and an engineer get together and do their fee structures.
They calculated it out down to the.
Seventy-five, oh, one, two, over.
I.
That's crazy.
I mean.
Okay, so we decide.
To be.
Minor.
I like minor 100, major 200.
Yeah, that's, that's it.
Yes.
Now, the site plan review, boy, we would love your input here.
So on this one, I, I, personally, I like, there's two of them. There's the Westford one, which I like. personally, I like, there's two of them, there's the Westford one, which I like. And then, I know, but it, and I'll explain why.
Yeah, go ahead.
And the Salisbury one, so.
Salisbury one, yeah.
Westford I like because this allows for it's, it's a variable application fee. So if an applicant is coming in to, for a small two thousand square foot, uh, retail building versus a ten thousand square foot retail building with a lot more, uh.
Excuse me, pardon? You need to say two and ten are in the same group. It would be one to two, twenty thousand gross, twenty oh one to seventy-five thousand gross.
So you're in your, because your example of one and ten is the same, okay? Yeah, sorry.
Okay, so I'll just.
One and ten are in the same group. Yeah, one and ten, okay, I'll use a, a much bigger number. Anything above twenty thousand, say if we're in twenty-five thousand gross square foot versus a five thousand, it's going to be higher for the bigger building because there's more to it. There's going to, when you have a bigger building, there's going to be coming more, there's more cost for reviews, there's more cost for, uh, there's going to be more parking, more, um, traffic, there's, there's more implications, more effect from that application.
And there's more, there's a larger economic bonus benefit to the applicant as the building is larger.
Yeah, I'm, I'm beginning to get sold on the Westford model.
Let me ask you a question, Ed.
Yes.
Oh, just the first, the first piece at Westford, and I don't know how they come up with twenty versus ten or anything. So what they're basically saying is, your application's going to be three thousand, let's say I'm building a ten thousand square foot building, so math is easy.
Yes.
I'm going to pay you three thousand dollars as my base price. Then a hundred dollars for each a thousand gross square feet over the thousand, so for the next nine thousand, I'm going to pay you a hundred.
That's my reading of that.
So that's nine hundred dollars.
Correct.
So it's thirty-nine hundred bucks.
Thirty-nine hundred.
Thirty-nine hundred total.
Yep, and when you jump to twenty to seventy, to seventy-five, the initial fee goes from three hundred, three thousand to forty-nine hundred.
And then it's fifty.
Gross over the initial twenty thousand is fifty per thousand.
Yeah, so that gets lower.
Yeah.
For every, for the bigger.
It actually makes a lot of sense, now, I don't.
I don't know.
I don't know that there's any, well, the other.
So from twenty thousand to twenty thousand oh one. Bless me, another nineteen hundred dollars. Okay, so I'm going to do that, I'm going to make sure my building is nineteen thousand nine hundred ninety-eight square feet.
Absolutely.
You see? And that's, but that's.
Go ahead.
That is how.
Or you, and you have six fewer parking spaces in order to stand, yeah.
Yeah, fine.
But, but if you think, if you think about Westford and what Westford has, we don't necessarily have, maybe we don't want. But I mean, I go to Westford because there's big bucks, retailers over there.
Retail.
And we don't have, and we don't, and we're not zoned for big box retail.
And it's not the right.
So I don't think we're going to hit the seventy-five thousand. So.
I, in my, in our, in our current.
The truth is, at these big buildings, this is still chicken feed, I mean, for all the other expenses.
That is another thing I wanted to say, is most developers are going to see that application fee and they're not going to care.
They don't care.
Ninety percent of them will not care. Because to them, it's a drop in the bucket over the grand scheme of the whole, uh, applicant, the whole project.
Double checks the calculation of the application fee, you?
I will. As long as Barbara doesn't have to do it, I'm cool.
So the last one on the Westford is a plan that does not have structures.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, what was that?
It's an interesting one, plan principally without structures, under forty thousand.
Yeah, the last one.
How do you have a site plan review required, just maybe it's a parking lot?
So, uh, so if you have a landscaper who doesn't have a, an actual building, it's just a, a storage yard.
Bins and stuff like that.
Bins, your, you know, mulch, stuff like that, just kind of sitting there.
I'm trying to think of another use that you could, parking trailers.
We don't allow landscaping in our town, so we don't need a river.
Industrial park. Uh, it's, if.
Park lot, that's what I said, yeah.
Parking lot for tractor trailers, stuff like that.
Party hut.
We don't allow park lots, we don't allow landscapers, so we got to code.
Where do we get form-based code applications and site plan review?
Yeah, so form-based code is just a zone, it's, so they would still apply under site plan review or special permits and stuff like, whatever they need.
But their, their main is site plan review?
Yes, yeah.
What's the typical, if we look at the lots, what are the, uh, square footages that we're going to expect out there?
So are you talking about?
In, in town.
Open, open lots that we have right in town?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, my point is we should, um.
Yeah, this is.
Encourage. I, I, I want to encourage downtown development. I, I don't, I don't have any problems with increasing the preliminary and definitive plan for developments. But, um, I want to be careful we don't, you know, make, even, even though there's, there's, you know, there's, there's going to be plenty of profit for, especially for the large ones. But when you get to the south side of West Main Street, it's going to be some small lots. Uh, or small, relatively small.
Yeah.
Uh, I still want to encourage those, um, that development.
No, I, I agree with you, but, you know, and from experience.
These don't.
These aren't.
Yeah.
We did a, I, I did a eighteen-lot condominium that was, costed us twenty thousand dollars for the application fee just for site plan review, that was just it.
Yeah.
Didn't matter. Most developers at this point know that the upfront cost is not going, it's not, and I'm not saying that our costing to be that crazy.
You're coming to four to five meetings with three lawyers. This isn't.
Right.
Anything.
Right. The only, there's the other issue that comes up with this, which is interesting, is if the developable portion of the lot, let's say the lot has wetlands on it, it's unusable, it's only fifty percent of the lot is usable. You're still paying on the gross square footage of the lot itself.
So the gross square footage, the gross square footage is, is the, uh, it's going to be.
Finished building or finished.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Or finished work on.
It's, it's not the lot size, it's the building.
So.
Okay, sorry.
And I'm going to translate that in my brain, but I saw, what I heard was I've got a four-acre lot that I want to put a parking lot on, a relatively small parking lot on. So I pay for the gross square footage of the parking lot, and the rest of it, I pay no fee for at all because it's wetland or future use.
Okay, I got it.
Is that, that's how I saw that?
Yeah, that would, that one would fall under the, the principle without structures on that one, yeah.
So I'd add, you know, just because I guess I should have known gross square footage was for the building. But maybe it wouldn't hurt to have the word building in there. One to twenty thousand.
Yep.
Gross square foot of the building, a building gross square feet.
Oh, building of the square feet.
Because that's what we're talking about. A G S F is the gross square foot of the building.
Littleton's using the word structure.
Structure, building.
You can, yeah, you can use structure, you can use building, you can.
You know, structure is a really good word.
Structure is a good word because it, it encapsulates a lot of different things, it's anything that is.
Solar panels. Parking lots have solar panels, you get a structure.
Yeah, that, that's considered a structure because there is a foundation, there's a.
Yeah, it's a structure.
So it looks like we're leaning toward the, the Westford models, potential.
I, I wonder how many large structures we'll have with it, but I like, but I like the layout of the Westford and the way it works.
And so.
I think it's fair.
I'm going to sit down with a spreadsheet and do some thing, or some plinking on it, figure it out.
It may seem a little more complex, but I think it's also just.
And just so you know, on, so like on Salisbury, that was the reason I had suggested that one is, so with that one, the way it was calculated is basically impervious area. So the more impervious area you have, that's where the ten cents per square foot comes in. So if it's a big, open lot with a lot of impervious area, it's going to be a higher cost. And that has helped reduce how much impervious area is on these lots, people are trying to increase how much landscaping they have, it reduces all those open fields of what we're dealing with of payment.
So I have some, I'm sorry, Jeff, I can go first.
Please.
That's coming up with the stormwater utility conversation, so first we're going to start at just, um, the fees, but eventually it's going to come back to us through subdivision regulations, et cetera. Because we may be able to get to that, we may be able to hit that discour, encouraging more permeable, the higher ratio permeable, impermeable, not necessarily through the fee, but through what the stormwater assessment would be. Do you see where I'm going with that?
Yeah.
So that could happen.
Okay. And the other, the other tool in our toolbox right now for pervious versus impervious is, uh, OSRD. More, more open land, more untouched land, you get, you get bonuses.
You get bonuses.
So, um, I don't know that the fee structure upfront will have that much on it, and I think of Salisbury as a fairly different style.
Yes.
Style definitely than ours, their geography is different.
Extremely different, yes.
Their zoning, when they got zoning, they already had a lot of little things built.
Yes, it did.
We both have beaches.
I live in both towns.
Yes, we both have beaches, but, but.
You live in both towns?
Yes.
I was born in Salisbury, my mom still lives there.
And I'm not, nothing, but, nothing in Salisbury.
And also.
Think about Salisbury, I mean, you go through the community.
And you understand.
Also, on, to build on that, is they do have a lot more wetlands, a lot more, um, because it's a, it's a coastal community.
It's a coastal community with a lot of, with a title, with a title issue to it, too.
And that's one of the ways they're trying to combat impervious area over there. And they're, and they're fighting against the guy who has a cottage, which is now a four-story condo, that's an Airbnb all summer long.
What misery, oh my gosh.
With parking out back.
Good, and then, so, so, is the consensus then that we like the Westford model on the fee structure?
I'm looking at the Westford model, and between now and the next meeting, I'm going to spend some time thinking on it.
And Danny will write this up.
And I'll write this up.
Write this up so we can see a clean sheet.
And you guys continue to keep looking at this if you feel there's.
And so the last one is the modification of site plan approval, it's currently two fifty.
Yes.
You want to just keep it there, or is there any reason to increase it a little bit, or?
So on this one, it, it, this is where it's going to depend on the minor versus major.
Minor, major?
Because if it's a minor modification, there's no public hearing, I mean, there's no, yeah, it's not a public hearing, it's a public meeting. So there's no legal notices, it's all that, so typically you want that to be a little bit lower, there's not as much review that is involved. When it's a major modification, at that point there is, because it's a substantive, uh, change, it's, you're going to have a public hearing, you're going to have legal notices, abiders' notices, more of a review, DPW is going to really look at this, like, so it's going to be a lot more, um.
Do you like the Salisbury model, is that what you think?[1632.36]